is going to give our invocation tonight, then I'm gonna tell you a little story. Then I'll get a little recognition to do and then we'll kick off the meeting if that's okay. Proceed, please, sir.
Let us pray. Oh God, we thank you that you are a faithful and wonderful God. We acknowledge your glorious presence as you promised by having your spirit visit with us in this sacred space this evening. As you commanded through your prophet Samuel, for your kingdom to continue, it is your will to seek after leaders whose hearts are turned towards you. May you find that these, your council of the city of Monroe, are those kinds of people who do exercise your authority in right leadership concerning the affairs of your people because they are in right relationship with you. By your grace, allow them to administer with wisdom and discernment. Allow the hearts of your people, these, the citizens of this city of Monroe, to find great comfort and to be at peace knowing that these, our leaders, have found favor in your sight and in this season. As we look to the celebration of your given son, Lord, will you once more remind us, yea, even through angels or by stars in the firmament or even by the twinkling decorations around us, remind us that you are still with us. We do need you, Lord. We need your help. We need Emmanuel. We need you in the wisdom of our decision making. We need you as our provision so that our needs may be met. We need you as our security and that we be strong in our faith. We need you as our Lord. And by your strength, we as a community will continually declare of your glory and your goodness so that the world may see and know that in Monroe, our God reigns. I speak a pastoral blessing on those gathered in this place. And joy to the world, the Lord has come. Merry Christmas, everybody. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Hugo. Before you go, we've got something else going on this month. What you got? Live Nativity?
I, Live Nativity starts on the 20th.
You gotta give us an advertisement, right?
Thank you. Starts on the 20th.
Okay.
20th through the 24th.
Okay.
And that will be at 6:00 PM every evening for two hours. Come out, see if there's a live camera, I believe, every, every other evening. It's always a joy to have the children out.
Right.
And it's a, just a great privilege that we can do this for the city and see literally, over the years, thousands of people who've traveled from far, as the Bible says, to come visit this glorious city of ours. So, thank you.
I appreciate you doing that. Thank you so much. And, and I'm sure we'll all see you out there. But that's 6 o'clock from the 20th through the 24th. Awesome. Merry Christmas. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we have some state champions, football players. Our six and under team. Coach Quay Ivy, where are you, Quay? I saw you standing at the door. And then I have Brian Jernigan, coach of our 10 and under team. I also want to point out, I know there's some other assistant coaches out there, but I know the, the best one is our streets guy over here, Jeremiah Still. He said he instilled the meanness in all those players. So guys, the guys on the line, line of scrimmage, which is the most important part for the big boys like us. I know you learned well from him. And I, I would, if you don't mind, come up and, and I need the boys first to, to come on up. And let, let me show you something. By the way, I borrowed this. Boys, come on. Y'all come on up front. These, these kids won the, the Super Bowl, which is a state championship for the state of Georgia. And they got some pretty awesome bling. I got this medal that he said he was not gonna let me have, but I did get to wear it, so he knew that I wouldn't lose it. You ready? Y'all would turn, turn around and, and wave. And if parents who have cameras, y'all fire away. And before, before I let these kids go sit down, I need to look for our cheerleaders. I know I have a couple back there, right? This is, this is the pretty sweet ones. Y'all come on up. Well, does she have a brother on the team?
She does.
Does that brother wanna go help bring her up? Wanna go get her? Brian and Quay, y'all come on up. Jeremiah? Come in. I know, they're being ugly. All right. This, this is what's interesting. In the last, probably in the last forever, Monroe youth football, we were the Packers all growing up. And then they, they split into divisions and different teams that competed against each other in town. We didn't win anything. We, you know, we would kinda knock each other around and win a game or two here or there. But these kids have not, these 10 and underers have not lost a game in three years. Okay? So we have silver medalists, track and field. We have middle school state champions. We have state champion football players. We have region championships in basketball the last couple of years at Walnut Grove and Monroe area. And our football team went into the third round of state this year for high school. So we're killing it athletically. I appreciate your leadership for all your coaches. And fellas, you will learn a lot from these guys. So, you know, no matter that they yell at you from time to time, I need you to understand that they're doing it for a reason. And you'll grow up to be fine young men. And I appreciate you being here. All right? Thank you so much, everybody. Wait for the camera. And I think I have a question in the back. Yes, sir. Hey, Mark.
May I?
Not yet. What's, what's?
I just wanna give a donation to the, the group.
Okay, yes, that'd be great. Hey, fellas? Everybody turn back around. This is Mark Schrak. He's from Scoops.
I wanna give you guys an opportunity to come to Scoops for a free ice cream. Coaches, get ahold of me and we'll set up a time for you guys to come up and we'll treat the kids to Scoop, to free ice cream.
Awesome. Now, now fellas, you are more than welcome to stay, but I know you don't want to. So, bye. Thank you. Good to see you, man.
It's our free ice cream.
Bye, y'all.
You gotta win a state championship.
No public comment. It was good.
A little different.
All of a sudden, we don't have a big crowd anymore.
Feeling good about our meeting.
I know. I told Kerry Bailey, I'm like, it's very tough to not play favorites.
Yes, sir. Come on.
Okay. Let's call this meeting to order of our December meeting, the last meeting for many folks on, on this council. And we'll go into appreciation and loving and kissing and all that stuff in just a little bit. Let the record reflect that all members of council are present, save Mr. Garrett. I need a motion for the approval of the agenda, please.
I have an amendment to the agenda, if I could, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Under new business, if we could add item M for police retention bonuses.
Yes, sir. Item M. Okay. And do we have another, another issue that, that we need to amend?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would request that we add legal real estate in the executive session. So that'd be item six, number two, if anybody could offer a motion on that.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Tyler. Okay, so I have both motions on the floor. Do I have to do them as, might do them together? Okay. Okay, so I have a motion and, and a second. So I had two original motions. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Now, I need a motion for the approval of the consent agenda, please. This is the November council minutes, planning commission from October, historic preservation commission from September and October, DDA in October and CVB in October as well. I need a motion for the approval of the consent agenda, please.
Move to approve.
Let me give that one to Larry and I'm going to give you a second, if that's okay, Nathan. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Public forum tonight, we had no one sign up. So I'll move straight to the city administrator update. Mr. Probst?
Thank you, sir. Just a few things. Happy birthday, Rodney Middlebrooks. Young man today. But I wanna brag on his, his crew, his, his gas department, real quick. They had a public service commission audit today, kinda sprung up. And I got, I got debriefed on it this afternoon from the PSC and they passed with absolute flying colors. PSC auditor just noted how amazing that gas department operates here in Monroe. So thanks to Rodney, Brian Pittman, Matthew Peters and all the guys under the gas department. They're doing an amazing job and keep us safe and keep our energy on. So thank you to them. One other thing of note, we have, I think you have some cards at your table, community kickoff meeting coming up Wednesday, December 20th for what's called the Codea Palooza. So if you can remember, just about it, earlier this year, maybe it was last year, we went through a series of meetings on form-based codes and kinda revamping our code ordinance structure, trying to get away from certain Euclidean zoning standards that we have that makes things really complicated in, in some ways. So we're trying to educate the public as to what the form-based code is so that creates education and buy-in for the community. But you're all welcome to participate. And of course, as council members, we'll be, you know, calling on you to have certain meetings with our consultant. I don't know if you wanna add anything to that, Brad, but...
No, just a reminder, yeah, that we have those interviews scheduled with council, December 18th and the 21st, I believe it was. And we have that scheduled completed. And this is the beginning of the, of what Logan described as the Codea Palooza, which will be a four-day event in January where they interact with the, the citizens of the city of Monroe, gain the citizens' feedback, and that would be open to the public entirely for four days.
Similar format to what we did for our comprehensive plan, maybe even a little bit more robust than that in some ways. But this will set the tone for how our city will grow, develop, look and feel for the next 30, 50 years. So this is a very important meeting, considering all the development that we have going on in the city now and in the near future. And that is really about all I've got tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Probst. Sir, any questions for Logan? Hearing none, I'm gonna pass over to Chris Bailey for the city administrator report, please.
Thank you, sir. I'm gonna keep this fairly quick and just focus on two recent events. We had bike strikes and magical lights parade that's, let's say, kicked off November 16th. We pulled some downtown data and it looked like we had about 3.9,000 people here, so 3,900 people in downtown Monroe area, which was up just a little bit because of that parade. Obviously, most kids, at least when I was growing up, don't have cell phones, so you're not gonna be able to pull their data too. We had a, we had a good contingent probably steadily roll through the park for about an hour and a half. So that was good. The lights looked great, having been redone this past year. Second thing, Christmas parade this past Thursday, the numbers were 22,200. But once again, I would say, most kids don't have cell phones, so I'm saying we're pushing close to 30,000. And streets and members of solid waste, central services, buildings, grounds, parks, everybody that come together, a lot of public safety, people out there, I think most all of them. Just a huge thank you to the cleanup efforts and setup, everything. It's always, it goes off without a hitch. I know I had somebody from the public tell me that everything looks like a well-old machine and I always feel like it's, you know, about to run off the rails at any given moment. But it's just, it takes so many people to put that together and to make it run as smoothly and efficiently as it does. And you can see what the draw to Monroe is these days because every event we have, it continues to grow and grow and grow. So just kudos to all the departments that helped out and that were there to the wee hours of the morning and then came in Friday morning and cleaned up parking lots and feeder streets. So, and that's it. Provided any questions?
Thank you, Chris. Are there any questions for Mr. Bailey? Logan and Chris, I mean, you probably know a better time than now to tell you how much we appreciate you. The, the day-to-day operations are, are running very well. And, and I'm getting stuff, I'm getting notice now of folks who, who see the work that goes in and express their appreciation for our public works team, for streets and drainage, for electric, for fiber. You know, you get a lot of calls after, after events. Get a lot of calls after some, some bad weather events as well. But it's, it's that every person on this team is working together. And that's from your leadership and I appreciate it. Just, I wanna let you know. Moving to Jeremiah Still, L-MIG allocation, 2024. Jeremiah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we're seeking approval of the project list for the 2024 L-MIG program. It's a total of 261,168.21 with 60,269.59 being our 30% required match. So, project list this year consists of, and it's, it looks considerably larger than the typical project list because we're trying to stretch a dollar as far as it can go and do a couple of different applications and procedures throughout these streets to, just to try to make them last as long as they can. So I'll, I'll go over the, the project list with you. The first one is Sorrel Street. It will get the treatment that we've done for the past three years. It's a deep patch, a complete milling, complete lane width milling, overlay and striping. Cherry Hill Road will get deep patching, overlay and striping. Will not need milling because it doesn't, the elevation change on it will not affect the, the drainage. So we'll just do an overlay there. East Marable Street and McDaniel Street primarily will be deep patched. Those two streets, sections of those streets are in, in bad shape. But deep patching will get us another year in, in length for that. There will be a short section of McDaniel Street from Broad to Wayne Street that will get milled down, patched and overlaid. We, we've overlooked that section when we've done that in the past. It will be called up this time. Poplar Street, the section from the two-way stop at the bottom of the hill behind the airport going up to the city limits will be deep patched and overlaid and striped. And then Pennell Road from the city limits to South Madison Avenue will be deep patched and we'll do some crack sealing over there along with overlay and striping. So that completes the project list. The numbers on the length, again, looks like we're gonna do a lot more than what we're gonna do. We're actually gonna overlay about, close to two miles, just a little bit over two miles, which is what we've shot for each of the past several years. And then we'll take into consideration the deep patching on Marable and McDaniel will be the bulk of that. And I'll be glad to take any questions.
Thank you, Jeremiah. Are there any questions, Mr. Still? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Dickinson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Crawford. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to utilities, approval for safety equipment and for material handling truck. Rodney Middlebrooks.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the, asking for your approval to send the truck that we purchased, I think it was about a month ago, the material handling truck for electric, send it back to IOTech to have the, all the safety cages and, and stuff listed there on the second page. It's the lights, the cab protector, or cab guard, winch, bumpers, so forth. It's $57,142.26.
Thank you, Rodney. Are there any questions for Mr. Middlebrooks? Hearing none, all entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Little. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm gonna give that one to Chaz. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the approval of the water treatment plant pump repair, Mr. Middlebrooks.
Yes, sir. This is approval, asking for your approval for a pump rebuild at the water plant from Ten Carva in the amount of $29,757.
Thank you, Rodney. Are there any questions for Mr. Middlebrooks?
Move approval.
Motion to approve by Mr. Bradley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Little. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Back to Rodney, utilities, approval for C, for GMC Engineering Services contract.
Yes. Asking for your approval to enter a contract with GMC for gas engineering for the gas for the new county jail. It's gonna require a high-pressure main that would run from Sorrel Street at our warehouse location all the way to the jail site. And the engineering estimate is at $252,485.
And that'll be coming from CIP. Are there any other questions for Rodney?
Rodney?
Yes.
You explain a little bit, the total project, that project's $2,477,000.
The, yes, the initial estimates were 2.4. Those were budget numbers from the engineer.
Explain to me how much of that will be recouped from the county?
County's gonna, county's gonna give 1.5 million towards the project. Which is basically, which is basically the cost of the two-inch that would supply what they need. But we're needing to make it an additional, we need to go to the four-inch to give us additional gas. We have no high-pressure gas out that side of town. So we're having some issues at the industrial park.
Are there any question, any other questions for Rodney?
I move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Little. Your second?
Second.
Give that to Ms. Malcolm. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Back to you, birthday boy, for the approval of purchase of electric materials for the new jail.
Mayor, real quick on that one. We'll end up doing an IGA with the county for that cost sharing. I think the county attorney's already working on that.
Okay, so...
On the cost sharing of the actual contract, of the installation.
Okay.
Once that happens. Not on the engineering, that's on our side, but the million and a half, we'll have an IGA come before you, probably, I think, January, February.
Okay, thank you.
This is for the electric. It was a choice load between us and Georgia Power. So county awarded it to us last week. The initial estimates we had, it's included or it's attached, it was 3, 358,000, yeah. And the next day, they submitted a new set of plans, so we hadn't had time to review it. We do know it's got a much larger transformer, so we're expecting this cost, this amount to go up. And that was the reason I asked for this one not to exceed 500,000. That way, we could go ahead and start purchasing material.
Thank you, Rodney. Are there any questions for Mr. Middlebrooks?
Thank you.
County pay any of this?
No. So what this was, was a choice load deal where we kinda bid on who's gonna serve it. So it's been a long time, probably since Monroe was actually one of these. So we're, we put our best foot forward, how much it's gonna cost. It's actually a fairly short build for us. But then we, you know, proposed rate structures for them and we beat Georgia Power, which is good. It keeps all of our, our own tax dollars that pay for operation of the jail right here at home. So we feel good about it.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move approval.
Motion to approve by Mr. Bradley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Little. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Rodney and, and Nathan, I've recently been keeping an eye on public service commission rate studies and it's, it was a no-brainer for the county to go with us. Our, our rates are substantially lower than Georgia Power and, and Oglethorpe Power family too, so Walton MC, to the tune of about 15%. So I appreciate you're holding our feet to the fire all the time and I appreciate you're getting it done. Let's move to new business, application of beer and wine package sales for Monroe Mini Mart. Natasha DeRoche, did I pronounce that correctly? I think you can just stand right there if you'd like. Is the application in order, Paul?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, Mayor, that application's in order.
You don't have to speak because this is typically a slam dunk, but did you wanna say anything? Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Mr. Boyce and second by Ms. Malcolm. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Thank you, sir. I'll move to the application of beer and wine package sales at Jack Peters Grocery.
That application's in order, Mayor.
Abashak DeRolia, application is in order. You're good? Did you need to say anything? Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Motion to approve by Mr. Bradley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Crawford. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the application of Spiritus Liquors of Beer and Wine on premise consumption at Legabriel Crepes and Waffers, Waffles. Carlos? Thank you for coming, man. I think you're pretty, probably pretty good. Anything you wanna say? Absolutely, it's okay. Come on up. You can, if you don't mind, you can stand behind the podium. We'll catch you on the, on the mic.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. And I think, once you listen to what I have to say, maybe you understand the why. My name is Carlos Jimenez and I'm the owner of Legabriel Crepes and Waffles in Winder. 20 years ago, I was here in Monroe, working 12 hours a night at the Avondale Mill. I wasn't cooking food exactly. My job was to cook the starch to be put in the fabric. At the same time, I had a part-time job training to be a hibachi chef in Athens. I left the factory and became a hibachi chef in Nicos. After that, I worked in many restaurants in every position you can imagine. Dish washer, kitchen manager, server, bartender, general manager. Two years ago, my family and I had the opportunity of opening our own restaurant in Winder. Legabriel is a French-inspired restaurant that also serves traditional breakfast and brunch. Yes, we serve biscuits, grits, chicken and waffles. But most importantly, we serve our community. When Logan, the city administrator, invited us to come to Monroe, he didn't know anything about my history in, in Monroe. He gave us a tour and we discovered how much the city had changed in this time. I have changed too. I have now a beautiful wife and a son. And 20 years later, I'm coming back to Monroe where my cooking career started. As a family, we're here tonight not only applying for a liquor license. We are asking for an opportunity to serve Monroe's community. Monroe changed my life 20 years ago. 20 years later, we want to be part of the amazing transformation that is happening here. Grow together and serve this amazing community, our new home. Thank you.
Man, I'm so excited you're here. Thank you. Application's in order?
Absolutely.
I'll entertain a motion, please.
Move approval and welcome him and his beautiful wife to Monroe.
Thank you, Larry. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll take the second to David Dickinson. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Carlos, we can't wait. January? We, well, we do too. Thank you. Moving to appointments of the Downtown Development Authority and Convention and Visitors Bureau Authority and Urban Redevelopment Agency, we have two appointments that will expire December 31st, 2023. First, Clayton Mathias would like to continue to serve on the DDA, CVB and URA. I need a motion to reappoint Clayton Mathias for a three-year term to expire on December 31st, 2026.
I move.
Motion by Mr. Dickinson and a second by Mr. Bradley. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to second, Andrea Gray would like to continue to serve on the DDA, CVB and URA. I need a motion to reappoint Andrea Gray for a three-year term to expire December 31st, 2026.
Move to approve.
Give the motion to Tyler. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Malcolm. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the approval of the two thousand twenty-four budget resolution, Beth.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, what you have before you tonight is the, um, proposed twenty-twenty-four capital and operating budget. Um, this can be found on our website. Um, the total citywide budget is seventy-seven million, four-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-six dollars. Um, this is a decrease of about five percent over the current twenty-twenty-three budget. Um, this is due to made, um, a couple of grants that were in some of the major funds um, in twenty-twenty-three that will not be in twenty-twenty-four. Um, the citywide proposed capital budget for twenty-twenty-four is nineteen million, eight-thirty-six, six-ninety-one. Um, and the attached resolution, um, is for the twenty-twenty-four capital and operating budget that will go into effect January first, twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you, Beth. Um, and I will, again, uh, thank Tyler for staying all over that too. Yeah, I know y'all probably drove each other crazy and we probably did too, um, but I appreciate your jumping on that. Would, uh, anybody like to have the ordinance read? Are there any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say, um, thanks so much to Beth, thanks so much to Logan and all the department chairs for, uh, for working on everything so hard. This was a tough budget because we had a reduction, which was the first time we've had that in a long time. And there were cuts that had to be made and there were things that hurt, but I really appreciate the fact that everybody came together, that we figured out how to get it done. And I really appreciate for, uh, you guys figuring out creative ways to be able to solve some of the problems that we had. So, I'd just like to say it was a, it was a good thing to be a part of and I'm very thankful for all the folks that we have here who are, who are making this thing run smoothly. So, I'd also like to make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Tyler. And I know you worked your tail off, I appreciate it. I'll need a second, please. Thank you, Chaz. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the RDF, CDBG Architectural Firm Selection, Mr. Bailey.
Mr. Mayor, sorry. I need to recuse myself from items F, G and H. They're upcoming, that's the next three.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. Thank you, Tyler. Chris?
Okay, good deal. So, this is the request for the approval of staff's recommendation for the award of our preliminary architectural report, design services and construction administration, RFQP, uh, to E and E Architecture for this first request, uh, that is, uh, CDBG funded. Also, the RDF fund grants that will be obtained to do this project.
Thank you, Chris. Are there any questions for Mr. Bailey? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Ms. Malcolm. Is there a second?
Okay.
Give that one to Larry. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Uh, the two thousand twenty-four CDBG Grant Writing Administrative Services selection, again, Tyler will be recused from this, uh, and we'll go back to you, Mr. Bailey.
Uh, very similar. Uh, this is the requested approval of staff's recommendation to select Allen Smith Consulting as our twenty-twenty-four CDBG grant writing administrative and related grants of services.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions for Chris? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
A motion by Mr. Dickinson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Malcolm. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the two thousand twenty-four CDBG Engineering Firm Selection, again, Tyler's recused from this one. Uh, Mr. Bailey?
Thank you, last one, and this is the subsequent, uh, request for award of the CDBG for twenty-twenty-four to the Preliminary Engineering Report, Design Services and Construction Administration Services Contract to Hofstadter and Associates.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions for Chris? I'll entertain a motion.
I move approval.
Motion by Mr. Little. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Crawford. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Um, moving to discussion for the embrace civility, um, this is a, uh, one of the babies of, or Georgia Municipal Association. Um, we have probably a third of, uh, Georgia municipalities who have, have joined in. And it's basically our way of saying that we're gonna behave civilly when we are in discussion and in meetings, uh, not only inside of the arena but out. Um, everybody has seen that at our GMA meetings, correct? We've all had the flyers that I've passed around and shared for a couple of months. Are there any questions about it? Um, I think we'll probably put it on the agenda for next month to become a city of civility. Uh, I did have, uh, a friend who, um, a, a fellow mayor who's town-passed it, uh, four to two. And, and it was, he was pretty disheartened because he said, if you know we're, we're not all on board with it, we don't need to be it. So, uh, I'm hoping that we'll have a, a unanimous, a decision when we talk more about this next month. And if, if you'd like, I can have Freddie maybe come, um, to part of the discussion if, if you so desire. So, just, uh, get with me on that, okay?
That might be good considering we have two new members.
Right, and you'll love, uh, Julie and Adrian and Greg. I think Greg might already know Freddie Barum, um, with GMA, but just a class act and, and that's, uh, his baby. So, um, we'll talk more about that next month. Uh, two thousand twenty-four council meeting schedule, Mr. Probst.
All right, very simple for next year, second Tuesday of each month. Uh, we don't have any issues with the July meeting date this year, so the July ninth should work out pretty well for us. And as always, if we need to have any extra committee meetings or anything else comes up along the way, other retreats and whatnot, we will schedule those accordingly. Um, as you know, I think there's one, January seventeenth, we're gonna have a retreat, um, an all-day kind of planning retreat. But otherwise, this is the regular council meeting for twenty-twenty-four.
Perfect, thank you, Logan. Any questions for Mr. Probst? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Ms. Malcolm. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Crawford. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving back to Logan for the two thousand twenty-four Planning Commission schedule.
And likewise, we have the third Tuesday for the Planning Commission schedule each month.
Are there any questions for Logan? I'll entertain a motion, please. Motion to approve by Mr. Gregory. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Malcolm. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the adoption of the two thousand twenty-four Historic Preservation Commission schedule, Mr. Probst.
All right, and to keep it in order, fourth Tuesday of each month, uh, HBC meeting schedule. Um, don't see any potential conflicts there yet.
Thank you, Logan. Are there any questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion by Ms. Malcolm. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Crawford. Now, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving, uh, we amended the agenda early to talk about police retention bonus. Uh, Mr. Bradley?
Yeah, you know, during the budget workshop that we had, we talked a lot about the police department and retention of police officers. And I think that the recommendations we made to the twenty-twenty-four budget, which we adopted a few minutes ago, were very good and sets us up well, you know, for twenty-twenty-four and going forward. However, I do think that, uh, there's a need for some retention money to be passed out. So, I'd like to recommend tonight that we, uh, award all sworn police officers a one-thousand-dollar retention bonus to be paid out before the end of this year. That'd be, money would come from the American Recovery Plan. Are there, money there available?
Thousand dollars before December thirty-first.
Right.
Are there any questions for Mr. Bradley?
How many sworn officers? Uh...
I had that number one.
Had it in front of me as well.
Fifty-seven.
Not too shabby. So, I have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second to Mr. Boyce. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Thank you, Mr. Bradley. Uh, moving to district items. Ms. Malcolm?
I don't have anything.
Ms. Crawford?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Boyce? You bring the team next month?
I'll try to bring them. Next month will be a lot better than the past couple of months.
Okay. Uh, Larry Bradley?
Well, I feel like I need to say something. Uh, twelve years and this is the last council meeting for me. And I, I guess to the other council members, I'd just like to say how much I appreciate the opportunity to work with each one of you and the, and the civility, I guess, that this council has shown and the corporations council has shown to each other over the last twelve years. And I could go and talk about what we've accomplished over the last twelve years from each of the departments and where they've come from and to now, but I won't cut that short, but the one place that I do wanna recognize, I think, is the department heads that are here tonight. And what they have done over the last twelve years has just been remarkable. Uh, I'm proud to say that I had at least some part of promoting all the department heads probably to the position they're in today. And, uh, for that, I take a lot of pride. One of the things I feel the best about from, from Logan and from the department heads. But, uh, y'all have done a great job and it's something to be proud of and the, all the council members have got a great staff now in the city to work with going forwards. I just appreciate that.
Thank you, Larry. Um, Mr. Gregory?
Uh, just wanna say the parade was fantastic. Thanks for everybody that, uh, that had a hand in that and, uh, Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. Little.
Well, this is my end after eighteen years and, uh, it's been really an honor and a privilege to serve the people in Monroe. And I feel confident that going forward, we got a great council and we got the best employees. Our department heads are great and I think there'll be great progress and a great future for Monroe.
Thank you, Nathan. David Dickinson?
I don't have anything to report from the district, but as a matter of just personal privilege, I just wanna say to Nathan and Larry, um, how much personally I appreciate what the two of you, uh, have done for this city. Uh, you've done some amazing work and this council and the citizens of this community just can't thank you enough, uh, for your service. I want you to know personally, uh, how much I appreciate it. Thank you, thank you, thank.
Thank you, David. Uh, in the, in the area of stealing my thunder, that's why I get to go last, so I'm gonna reiterate a lot of the things that have been said. Um, but first, uh, as we're coming into the end of the year, uh, we do have, uh, one employee retiring. Um, we, we've had, we've had others. We have one department head retiring, uh, Brian Thompson. Uh, he kinda took a little bit of a vacation the last few months as he stepped out, but he's officially retired, uh, at the end of the year. Brian was with us for decades, uh, sometimes with, uh, and this is purely in jest, sometimes it seemed longer than that 'cause he talks more than I do. Um, secondly, and, and I, I wish Brian were here 'cause just, he's one of the nicest people you'll ever meet, um, and he has a, a big heart for the city. Um, second, Leanne Aldridge, uh, is moving along, uh, as well. I think her last day is January fifth. Um, and wish she were here tonight to, to tell how much I appreciate, uh, the, the day-to-day work that, that she did, of course, but especially working on, on our events 'cause we are absolutely known for our thriving downtown with extremely successful events and somebody gets to coordinate all that. I mean, it takes a lot of folks to make it all work, but, but somebody gets to be the boots-on-the-ground, uh, coordinating, coordinating and, uh, and I just appreciate her work too. Um, now, as we come to the end of, of a term, uh, I want to, want you to know, Norman Garrett